I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October Board of Supervisors meeting. Let's get to it. Are there any public comment on any of the agenda items listed here tonight before we go to them? Here are none. We'll move into presentations by the Lancaster Public Library.
Thank you. I have a couple hard copies here. If anybody wants one of those, feel free to grab them. Yeah, good evening. I'm John Heinley. I'm Director of Donor Advising for Lancaster Public Library. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to share this evening. We're very grateful for Lancaster Township's partnership and support of the library for many, many years. And yeah, always appreciate the opportunity to give an update on what's happening. So some of this will be review for those of you who have heard these presentations before. Lancaster Public Library, which refers to the downtown branch and the mountain branch. Lancaster Public Library's mission is to inspire, empower, and strengthen our community by connecting people with information, ideas, and enriching experiences. Vision, by providing equitable access to vital educational resources, exceptional programming, and community building opportunities, the Lancaster Public Library is recognized as a dynamic center of knowledge and a cornerstone of a thriving Lancaster community. Over the past complete year, 2024, just a little bit of information about how Lancaster Township residents specifically have utilized the library. Twenty-two percent, so almost a quarter, are library cardholders. And residents borrowed nearly 23,000 items over the course of the year, which, and that's just the materials, it wouldn't include use of things like programs or coming to use the public access computers or things like that. So just materials that were borrowed, that is approximately $664,000 worth of free materials accessed by township residents. And our whole community, the way that in 2024, our community utilized the resources, over 236,000 library visits, over half a million materials were circulated to members of our community, and almost 81,000 computer sessions were utilized, which, thinking about, I mean, I'm guessing most people in this room pay for at home internet, and we all have a sense of how much that costs. Thinking about people in our community, many of whom either can't afford to have a device, can't afford to pay for internet at home, so being able to come to the library and utilize those devices for all the things that we have to do online these days, whether that's job applications, health research, scheduling appointments, all sorts of things, it's really vital access. And so it's really wonderful to see that, and that is a number that has continued to go up pretty dramatically, especially in our new building. And as you know, we do more than loan books and offer internet access, and I won't go over all of these in detail, but a few examples. Our Business and Reference Center, this is something that I like to highlight throughout our community, especially in the presence of community leaders, so that everybody is aware of this resource that we offer. This is unique not only in Lancaster County, but in the surrounding counties. It is a business center that has a bunch of databases that are quite expensive to purchase or to have for a year of subscription. So small businesses are not able to afford to do that. Nonprofits have access to a database likewise that's pretty expensive to be able to do grant research. So we have businesses, entrepreneurs able to do market research, things like that through the Business Center, and score the community nonprofit that mentors entrepreneurs and people starting and running businesses. They reference their clients to come use the Business Center. Likewise, the Autism Resource Center is a unique resource. It is for individuals on autism spectrum or with other sensory disorders, and we have all sorts of print and audio resources for individuals, for families. We also have things like weighted blanket that a family can try out to see if it works for their child before they would invest in buying something like that. So really wonderful resource that I want the community to be aware of. Some of the other things, since we are relatively new in this space, wanted to make sure that the community knows about the rooms that we have available for rent, and we have rooms that hold up to a couple hundred people that can be rented out, and we also have smaller meeting rooms. And the smallest meeting room, nonprofits can rent any of the spaces for a lower cost, and our smallest meeting room is available for nonprofits to meet with clients for free. And so if you know of nonprofits that need a space like that, we really want that word to continue to get out. We have all sorts of other items that can be checked out, things like American Girl dolls and games and musical instruments. I have rented out the, or checked out rather, the parachute for our neighborhood night out that the kids love to play with. And the last one I'll mention is our e-resources. People are most often familiar with Libby or Hoopla. We have ebooks, audiobooks, streaming that are all available through these, again, free, like all of these resources for the community. The other that is really exciting that, again, making sure our community knows about and the word spreads, this is a new one this year, Load for Kids. And what this is, is it's a database of children's books that are in dozens of languages, actually over 100 languages. And the children's books can be read or listened to as audiobooks, either in one of these 100 languages, in English, or alternating between English and another language. And so thinking of people who moved to our community, English is the second or third or whatever language for their family, it's a really incredible language acquisition tool and a resource, since we can't afford to or even find books in all of the languages represented in our community. Our programming, over the last year, we saw an 18% increase in our program attendance, which is really exciting to see. A couple of the new programs that we ran, among many others, in 2024, Read It and Eat It Cookbook Club, which is exactly what it sounds like and is a lot of fun. We did our first fully ASL, American Sign Language Storytime, and also our first Spanish Storytime. And so we're really excited about offering increasing opportunities for members of our community who otherwise lack access to those sorts of things. Future Architects Club was another exciting one that we added for our teens, senior adults. Recently coming off of our summer reading program, over 4,000 patrons were part of summer reading in one way or another. We offered 203 programs at the two locations over the 10 weeks, and 1,164 challenges, reading challenges, were completed, which says a lot, and that means a lot for our children as they are going through the summer to retain what they've learned from one school year to another. And just a list of some of our other popular programs, Baby Storytime is always bursting at the seams, and is a really wonderful place for new parents to meet other new parents and build community and the very beginning language acquisition and learning for children. Our projected budget for next year, to give an idea of the breakdown, 36% of our budget is through government resources. Now, that includes municipal partners like Lancaster Township, County, and State. This will be our last year receiving ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act, so one of the things we're looking at is what it means to remain sustainable and keep doing everything that we're doing when that ends, because that accounts for over 7% of our budget in the next year. Otherwise, other forms of fundraising, we have very active friends, the volunteers, who do things like the book sales and other activities to raise money. We have some internally generated revenue, like from photocopies or passport processing, things like that, but 40% is outright fundraised by community members, and that's individuals, foundations, and businesses that are supporting the library. So a lot of vital resources, vital sources of revenue, and we're grateful for each one of those, and each one matters in providing these services to the community. In the past, when we've done these presentations, we've put a little more emphasis on the national average per capita that is given by local municipalities, which was not probably the most helpful number, because states vary from state to state. So we're looking at this more helpful number, which is the Pennsylvania statewide recommendation for local municipal funding per capita, which is $5. And of the 14 municipalities in Lancaster Public Library service area, we average at this point exactly $1 per capita. Now, I'm very happy to say that Lancaster Township is very close to $2 per capita, so beating that average. But as we continue to do these visits and we think about the ARPA money going away and continuing to increase costs and want to provide services to the community at the level that we already are and then more, we do hope that as you consider the budget, that you'll continue to give just as generously and maybe consider each year trying to bump that up if at all possible, recognizing that you have a lot of competing priorities for this community. And thinking just briefly about stewardship, what our team is doing with the money that is given, whether that's from a municipality, individual donors, some of you are sitting in this room, or others, we have the eighth largest service area in the state of Pennsylvania out of 450 libraries, and the 18th largest catalog of materials. So this is a pretty incredible resource that we have available to our local community. And so looking at that recommended per capita contribution, the amount that our community is giving, individual donors, community members are giving, and what our team is doing with it is, just speaks to this community and also our team and how that money is being And we do really want to thank Lancaster Township for supporting us very generously and beating our local average. So thank you so much for that support. This year, that contribution is $36,500, which is significant and makes a huge difference in what we're able to do for our community. And in addition to that, 303 individual members of Lancaster Township have given over the last few years, which is real tribute to this local community and its commitment to the library. And additionally, 10 organizations or businesses in the township have been giving actively over the last few years. So that's a thank you both to the municipality and to this community as a whole. As we have been sharing about hoping that we can raise more money and that municipalities continue to increase their contributions, we wanted to start sharing more about what we really hope to be doing with increased funding, sustainable funding, as we move into the future. So an example of what has happened recently is this year, we launched the On the Go van, which you see in these photos and you may have seen around the community, and we hired or promoted some of the internally, Matthew, as our outreach specialist. And ARPA funds have helped to get this launched, but one of the areas that we need to continue to increase our funding to keep this program going, he is full-time doing outreach, meaning that he's getting out and working with community partners. So in just the first half of this year, he has been out in the community, excuse me, and connected with over 5,000 members of our community at these outreach events and doing 42 outings with different community partners in the first half of the year. Now, that includes schools, nonprofits, community programs. He has done a lot with East Peters, sorry, East Lampeter Parks and Rec. He would love to do more partnerships with local governments to be able to do activities together in parks and other places. So if there are ideas within the community, either from the municipality or others in the community of ways to partner, he wants to get out. And the idea with this is to eliminate barriers to access to library resources, so he can set up a fully functional computer lab with hotspots and laptops wherever he goes. He can create library cards to give people, he can take books along to check out or other materials, he can run programs, all sorts of things. He's taken telescopes out to do STEM activities in the park, things like that. So please reach out if you would like to partner on anything like that. Beyond that, we do want to expand what we're able to do with that outreach and removing barriers in our community to library access. We would like to grow ASL, Spanish, and other language activities, resources, programs, and represent our community more fully in what we're offering. We would love to extend into the evening hours for individuals who are working during our open hours so that they also can access those resources and so we can have more hours in the evening when parking is free, since that is a barrier for some people. We would love to hire a staff social worker to better support our patrons who are present in the library who need those sorts of services, and also to increase our staff presence on the floor from our librarians as they can offer very skilled answers to questions that people have. That's a QR code that goes to our website. I have my contact information there. Likewise, it's in the handouts, and I am happy to answer any questions, and if I can't answer them, to go back and ask somebody from our team and get back to you.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
Do you have a partnership with Franklin Marshall?
We, well, one partnership that we for sure have is that we do our big book sale there, the Friends of the Library, and they do give a generous reduction in, I think it's still costly to do it, but to rent that space, but they do give a generous reduction in the I, no other active partnerships come to mind. Do you have any specific ideas?
Just wondering.
Good question.
Please pass along our thanks to your leadership. We appreciate everything that the Lancaster Public Library is doing, especially in recent months and years where some municipalities have threatened to withhold their donations to you. Just want you to know that our board will be 100% behind you guys, so thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate that in the midst of some of the most trying of times over the last couple of years, your board has reached out directly and expressed that support and assured us of support, so thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? All right. Here are none.
Thank you again for your support, partnership, and for the opportunity to share.
Thank you, John. All right. Secretary of Support, any issues with last month's minutes?
No.
General Fund and Investments, Escrows, and Liabilities, $7,644,938.79.
Highway Eight Fund, $1,405,152.14. Capital Reserve Fund, $2,679,991.53, for a total of $11,730,082.46. The bills. General Fund paid, $879,024.14. Unpaid, $16,371.92, for a total general fund paid of $895,396.6. Escrow Fund paid, $4,294.65. Unpaid zero, for a total of $4,294.65. State Highway Fund paid, $5,424.79. Unpaid zero, for a total of $5,424.79. Capital Reserve Fund paid zero, unpaid is zero, and the total then is zero. Total paid, $888,743.58. Total unpaid, $16,371.92. The total bills are $905,115.50. I'd make a motion we pay the bills.
Second. All those in favor, signify that I stand aye. 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 All right. Reports. Lafayette Fire Company on the east side in September, they had six calls for service in Lancaster Township. Lancaster Township Fire Department, west side, September 2025. We don't have any numbers, but do we?
Assistant Chief for Lancaster Township Fire Department. So for September, we have 41 calls. I don't have the U T D staff with me right now. Additionally, we completed our Fund Drive walk-around last, two weeks ago, two weeks ago. Members surely enjoyed it. It was kind of fun walking around and talking to a lot of members, going door to door. Additionally, our annual Fund Drive management will be going out this week.
Reminders.
Reminders.
Later next month.
Later next month. Additionally, we also attended two public events this month, or the month of September, which was one called Grandparent's Day at the Riverside for fire education and summer day camp. Last thing that I have a note on is recently, the state made a change in our reporting system. They've used a new format, so some of our reporting may be a little delayed when we get it to you, because we're still trying to figure it out, honestly, because they switched it and didn't really give us instructions on how to do it. So we're getting it as soon as we can to you guys.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? No. All right. Thank you. Recycling report, August 2025, 18% of the trash was recycled. September 2025, 16% of the trash was recycled. Safety committee minutes and sewer reports, printed copies of all reports are available at the Township Office for a nominal hearing and viewing printed from the website. We'll now move into workshop reports. First up is planning zoning, Mr. John Donlin.
Last month, we did have a zoning hearing board meeting, because there was no business, and it doesn't sound like we're going to have one this month either. The Planning Commission did meet last month. At last month's Board of Supervisors meeting, I spoke to you and gave you a summary of two proposed new ordinances. One is natural landscaping, and the other is a rental property ordinance. So we sent that to the Planning Commission last month to do kind of an informal first look at it. Got lots of feedback from them, and you'll see that on the agenda tonight to start a more formal process moving to make that an actual ordinance. So that'll be to send it to the Planning Commission and the county Planning Commission as well for their feedback. The, I do want to speak to the natural landscape ordinance. We did make a last-minute updating some language than what you got in your booklet. It's basically the same principle, language just changed a little bit. I should thank Justin, who's in the room tonight, who's on our Planning Commission. He's been very helpful trying to get the natural ordinance, the language and so forth, with some of the concerns that we as staff have in the ordinance, and trying to bring that into something that we can really use. I also met with Linda Frelick, who attended our Planning Commission meeting and had some opinions to offer from the public. She also represents the Conservancy. And Linda actually was kind enough to come in and have a meeting with me and discuss that and get a little more language in there that she was concerned about as well. So I really appreciate it to both of them for helping me with that. The residential ordinance, there was some language that we changed in there. You have the latest version of that. I think that one's pretty self-explanatory. And other than that, you have a couple of light of the right ones on the agenda for planning zoning tonight to vote on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions?
I did see the Planning Commission meeting kind of packed.
Yeah.
For the two proposed ordinances. I'm curious to know what the attitudes were for the natural landscape ordinance.
The majority, I would say the majority of the people from the public that were here were here for the natural landscape ordinance, and I think most of them were all associated in some way with the Conservancy. I felt like they were coming to drag me outside, but they were very kind and offered some good feedback to us. They, I mean, overall, they had some concerns of the language we changed because of that. I think just made it a little bit clearer. I think it was just a matter of me trying to write some of the stuff in and maybe not having the expert view that perhaps they have a little more knowledge of. So I think once we worked through that, it was good, and I'm glad that the Conservancy was on board helping us with that, too.
Good. Awesome. Thank you. Next up, Township Engineer, Mr. Ben Webber.
Good evening. The construction projects throughout the township have been very active, and we've found we need to be increasingly vigilant to be increasingly investigative, to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing and not doing things they're not supposed to be doing. So.
We'll do that.
So sometimes it's creativity, sometimes it's desiring to take some shortcuts, and unfortunately, that leads me to have to apply more time scrutinizing the actual activities, which is what I'm here for, but takes me away from doing other things. That's added a bit of stress. We're also dealing with developers trying to shortcut their obligations and say, what do we really have to do in order to get occupancy to our project? And that's added stress for me and John and the Township Solicitor, and so we're working through those issues on a case-by-case basis, but it's, it's been difficult. So, but we're moving through, getting things done, and so I really don't have anything more specific to add at this time. I didn't send the report. Happy to answer any questions you might have about them.
Questions?
Questions here.
I'll just say that we appreciate the diligence in going after the construction projects that are maybe not following time. And yeah, so keep it up, even if it's frustrating. We appreciate it.
Will do.
Thanks. Good job, Ben. Appreciate it. And John.
No.
All right. Next up, public works, Mr. Ben Graff.
Yes. So a couple things to note here in my report. We met with, or I met with the folks from the Junior League of Lancaster. They've been all set up for the Run for Luck here early this year, so I feel like we're going to have a positive feedback on that and some new folks running it that seemingly say they're going to be on for a couple of years, so hopefully I see the same faces every year from them one for a little while. We filled our full-time crew position here. William had started the month after last month's meeting. He's been a great addition to the crew. We're still planning on the Yard Breese facility, working with Ben Weber on that, making some updates and changes to the plan. I think I noted that last month as well, so we're continuing to work on that. I met with the HOA team from Hawthorne Ridge. This will be the first year that we have dedication of those streets, so winter maintenance will be a little different. So I've spoken with the HOA, going through the process. So I've spoken with the HOA, going through the process of that and letting them know that things will be a little different and to our standards. A couple of their notes is we've worked with Lancaster Rec to install the new batting cage community park. We've handed all that off to them, it's been installed and the structure's been put up. They opted to wait until spring to put the net up. So all that's been handed off to them, but the structure's up. It looks great, they're very happy with that. And for our last month's meeting, the guys were out doing some milling and paving. You can see in the photos that we did make some repairs on Honeysuckle Lane as scheduled. So those roads are passion now and looking a little better. And of course, the lovely leaf collection has started. So we had started that this week, or late last week started, and that'll be picking up. And we'll be working on a new bid for the next three years. Hopefully have something to you here in November, November's meeting for that, soon they're coming out. So if you have any questions, that's all I got for you guys.
Done for me.
Not here.
Oh, good, all right, thank you, Ben. Next up, Police Chief.
Guess. For September of 2025, we had four hundred and thirty-one calls for service. All these numbers are pretty much in line with what we've been averaging year-to-date. Twenty-two crashes, luckily still no zero fatal crashes. The members wrote a hundred and twenty-four traffic citations, fifteen written traffic warnings, fourteen misdemeanor felony arrests, two DUI arrests, seven non-traffic citations, and we did not have any overdose incidents or fatalities. And the averages in year-to-date totals are on your sheet. I can't remember if I talked about it last month, I'm pretty sure it was implemented in September, but we now have a drug take-back box. Did I say that last month? I don't remember.
I don't think so.
So we now have that in the lobby of the police station. Old prescriptions, over-the-counter medicines. If anyone from the community wants to drop that off, they can drop it off and it'll be safely disposed of. Actually, the Drug Task Force for the county comes and empties it when we ask them to. So our hands are kind of clean from it, besides obviously watching the box. But we now have a drug take-back box in the lobby for the residents to get to put stuff in. The Police Department recently had a coffee with the cop at Wheaton Middle School in conjunction with the school district, went well. Talked to a bunch of parents dropping their kids off, that was the game plan of it. They seemed interested in talking to the police officers. We are going to be engaging in Toys for Tots and Shop With The Cop in November and December. Officer Ted McDonald completed Drug Recognition Expert Training. It's a pretty rigorous course in the law enforcement world. He completed three weeks of training and is now a certified D R A and just finished that, which is good for the Police Department. We ended up beefing up some of our resources for entry tools, breaching equipment that we really were kind of short on. So we ended up getting a little bit of that that's going to be carried in the supervisor's vehicle to give us some more opportunities if we would have to get into a school real quickly or something if there was a significant incident where we needed to gain entry. We were lacking a little bit of resources there. Our records management system, we're slated to be upgraded to Pathfinder, Cody's Pathfinder, which is a web-based version. We're going to have a little transition period, hopefully in November coming up. Possibly, I was originally told October, but I don't see that happening until November. Several of the officers just completed our yearly firearms qualifications and all but two of the officers are completed that don't have to be done by the end of the year to keep their M O P E C certification. One thing that's going to be coming new, that all municipal police departments are required to complete starting in 2026 is called Contact Data Reports, C D R reports. Just a little bit more light work that's going to be collected by the officers on traffic stops, more biographical information, but it's not going to be a requirement at all townships. We have the tools to do that. Tracks that we use for our traffic citation and our crash reports are going to be supplying contact data report forms, so it's not going to be any extra cost or anything that we're going to have to create, that the officer is going to have to fill out. That's all I have, any questions?
None for me.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next up, Township Manager, Mr. Woody.
We sent out the 2026 Boards and Commissions reappointment letters out to folks whose terms are expiring. We should have those back soon. As soon as I have those, I'll send those out to you, you know, where we might have vacancies. Handicap permit parking notifications went out. This is a chance where we annually renew those parking permits for anybody who has one. I think I forwarded you if I didn't. Lafayette Fire Company has appointed Jeff Keans as the new chief. He'd been the chief previously and Scott Hershey has stepped down. Two other items are, we're actively putting together the 2026 budget. I've received everything from all the department heads. We've reviewed all those items. Lisa and I have filled in ninety-five percent of it. We have a few outstanding items, mostly information that we need from outside sources that we're waiting on. I should have a draft each individually in the next week and then we'll be looking to make a presentation of the budget and then make any adjustments in November's meeting with passage in December. And finally, I want to give you an update on where we are with the Public Works building. We sent out letters to, boy, every medium to large-sized contractor in the region, making them aware of the fact that we're going to be sending out an R F P just so they're aware for it, they can start preparing for it. That R F P should be prepared and out in the next forty-five days. And hopefully we'll get bids back. In pursuit of that, there's an engagement letter on the agenda today for Concord Finance. Concord goes out and solicits financing, they only get paid if we use their services. They're able to secure and have had success with other municipalities, authorities, et cetera, et cetera, in getting public financing at a lower rate than what we might be able to get on our own. If a flat twenty-five thousand dollar fee, if they're able to, on the amount of money we're talking about borrowing, if they're able to get us, you know, even a fraction of a point better in terms of financing, it's well worth our time, money and effort. But we were clear that if we don't award the bid or if we don't go out for financing at this time, there's no charge to the township. So I'd like to engage with them. And the next action you'll see before you will be in November and that'll be a reimbursement resolution allowing us to go out for financing at some time in the future and reimburse ourselves for any money spent on the construction project should we proceed with it. So that's kind of the next steps of what we'll see. But our hope is to have bids back to you, hopefully successful bids back to you shortly and begin this work in spring.
Agreed.
Awesome.
Any questions? None for me? None for me either, thank you. Okay, we'll now move into announcements. Tuesday, October fourteenth, at six-thirty P M. Tuesday, October fourteenth, six-thirty P M is the Youth A Panel Meeting here at twelve forty Maple Ave. Tuesday, October twenty-first, at seven P M is the Planning Commission meeting here at twelve forty Maple Ave. Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, the zoning hearing board meeting is canceled. Friday, October thirty-first, from five to eight P M is Halloween Trigger Treat. Monday, November tenth is our next Board of Supervisors meeting here at six P M at twelve forty Maple Ave. All business.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we advertise and send a proposed draft of the Rental Property Ordinance to Lancaster County Planning Commission and the Lancaster Township Planning Commission for review.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we advertise and send a proposed draft Natural Landscape Ordinance to Lancaster County Planning Commission and Lancaster Township Planning Commission for review.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Aye. Planning and zoning.
Mr. Chair, L T P C three-three-two-dash-eighty Jackson Drive Stormwater Management Site Plan Time Extension we've received. Request for a time extension from David Bitner, Bitner Engineering, on behalf of David Costello, until January thirteenth of 2026 for the approval of Stormwater Management Site Plan.
Acknowledged. New business.
Appointment of Cameron Herzog as Special Fire Police for Lancaster Township Fire Department. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the nomination Cameron Herzog as Special Fire Officer for Lancaster Township Fire Department.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-two. It's an ordinance to amend the compensation of newly-elected Lancaster Township Supervisors to six thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars per year effective for newly-elected or re-elected supervisors. I'd make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Historical Commission Volunteer Member Application for David Ramos, eleven fifty-one Jamaica Road, with a term ending on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the application by David Ramos, eleven fifty-one Jamaica Road, to be considered as a volunteer member of the Historical Commission with a term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
David, got any words?
Well, no words right now. I kind of came into this, I learned about it today. But yeah, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, David. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, congratulations to you.
Mr. Chair, approval of Concord Public Finance Engagement Proposal for Public Works Building Project. I'd make a motion that we approve the Concord Public Financing Agreement for what we heard from Bill earlier for the Public Works project.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-seventeen Municipal Adoption of Twenty-Twenty-Five Lancaster County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Lancaster Township's adoption of the Twenty-Twenty-Five Lancaster County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, guest recognition and participation. Do you want to go with Ben first or do you want to go with Ben Webber first?
We could, I would do Ben first. That would be funny.
All right, so guest recognition, participation. Now, if there's anybody in the audience here tonight that does, has any concerns or public comment, just raise your hand and state your name and address and we ask that you please step over to the podium. Yes, sir.
Nick Seltsch, again, ten forty-eight Wheaton Avenue. I'm wondering if we're looking at any integration with the bike lanes in Lancaster City. You know, people are biking here and there around and they just sort of end when you get to Lancaster Township. And I'd like to have you guys consider maybe, I don't know what the process is to start that or to, have you been looking at that, Devon, or?
Yeah, so the main focus for the city is, out towards Lancaster Township, is the east side connector. We have been participating with them in that process. We don't always see eye to eye on their approach towards the integration of those lanes and sometimes our circumstances are a little different than theirs, but we are working cooperatively and we do anticipate some pedestrian improvements, especially where we're looking to get students from Lancaster Township over to the McCaskey and Lincoln campus. But also, we're looking at integrating in that pathway some bike pad facilities.
Okay, good.
That's really where our focus is right now.
Okay, are you thinking about marking any pavement with saying that this is bike? Because it just begins right there on Race up and once we get to the city.
So that's on the, you're speaking to the western part of the township. We've been working for about a dozen years with the Greater Heritage Pathway. I think that's what it's called, right? And it's going to come from basically the Health Campus down Good Drive to Marietta Avenue and then we'll go through the School Lane Hills neighborhood and connect over on the, over near Baker Campus, over on Franklin and Marshall. We are working with those folks and we anticipate having some pavement markings. Are we on Hillcrest at this point? Yeah, so the original proposal had that coming down Valley, which we found to be problematic because it crosses President into a one-lane street coming in the other direction. Plus, we have all the improvements of the sidewalks up around Country Day now, so we've asked those folks to shift those lanes northward and I don't have all the details there, but we are taking a look at some different pavement markings, which we think will let folks know where they're supposed to go without changing the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, good, yeah. I'm particularly interested in Race, so, just because that's near where I live.
So Race, where would you?
Well, Race itself runs along and then just begins between Chestnut and Lemon. It begins the bike lane for the city. And then before that, there's no, there are no markings coming down any further toward, into Lancaster Township.
Yeah, our connection there, when we make it, will be crossing President. Like I said, at Hillcrest, Hillcrest becomes something else when you get to the other side and connecting over the Race there.
Okay. Keep on going, because we need it, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else? Going once?
Me. Hello, Suzanne Stoltzus at twenty-one Atkins. I'm here on behalf of a group of residents who are increasingly affected by runoff and localized flooding. The intersection of Elwood and Atkins and there's two parking lots that drain into our streets and yards when it rains heavily. The two lots are about to go up for sale, so this presents a rare opportunity for the township to consider acquiring the properties and turning them into stormwater encampment, green space, stormwater encampment, which would directly benefit these houses, the neighborhood. If we act now, we can turn a liability into an environmental and community asset. I've been told that it would cost millions to upgrade the storm drainage system, so this would be a potentially cheaper option. We would envision a space with native plantings, bio swells, and maybe a community seeding area. It would absorb and slow runoff from Columbia Ave. We could catch it from a wide area. It would cool the block, it would reduce the burden on township storm drains. There are state and local grants that could help fund this, including D C N R, Lancaster Clean Water Partners, Growing Greener. There's also potential that the neighborhood could help fund this because it would be such a huge benefit to everyone. I know that this is a really big ask, so we're not asking for a blank check. I just, to explore the possibility of the acquisition before the property is sold and redeveloped, consider a feasibility or stormwater impact assessment and let us work with you on this. There's a lot of interest. So it's an opportunity to be proactive instead of reactive, and that is my comment. Thoughts?
I don't have any thoughts.
I'd be interested to know where you heard it's going up for sale.
I spoke with a Realtor who said that all of his, Bill Roberts', his building, his lots, are, look like they're going up for sale soon. Do you know why he completely cordoned off? Like, his one lot is inaccessible to vehicles at this point. Like, does anybody know why that happened?
I have no idea.
Yeah, like you cannot, so we couldn't drive to the back of our house because there's cement all the way around and then he put a sign. I thought maybe he did that because he's planning on selling them, but... So you're not aware that he's, that they're going to be listed? This is new information?
I don't know.
Okay. I'm happy to have a conversation with anyone after.
Yeah, we could have a conversation after.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Once, twice, all right. Ben? Thank you. Anybody else? Once, twice? All right. Ben, we'll be presenting on recalling our township's history.
So what time does the Flyers game start?
It's all right. I have to talk to John afterwards, so.
All right. So good evening again, everybody. This time, wanted to delve a little deeper and earlier into some of our initial infrastructure that occurred in Lancaster Township. It was the same as one of the initial infrastructure projects that occurred in Lancaster County as a whole, and that's what was called the King's Highway. Now, if you recall, we were under British rule when the county was formed in 1729, and Lancaster, as many people know, was one of the earliest inland communities in the country. And certainly in terms of the westward expansion, Lancaster was an extraordinarily important community for that westward expansion. Philadelphia was the largest port in colonial America, in the colonies, and the roadways going through Lancaster were one of the best roads. Even though it was difficult, it was one of the best roads. And in order to cross the Susquehanna River and make your way into western Pennsylvania and into the Ohio Valley, you needed to cross at a ferry, and some of the best ferries were at what was called then Wright's Ferry, today called Wrightsville and Columbia. So going through Lancaster was the main way to make your way there. And Lancaster offered, through its agricultural productivity and the factories that were here, offered a huge supply depot for people making their way into western PA and farther out into development. Now, the names of the King's Highway over the years, we know it typically as State Route 462. And for some, they might not realize that it used to be Route 30. We know Route 30, the bypass to the north of the city, but this was Route 30 for a number of years. Previously, it was known as the Lincoln Highway, and before that, it was the Lancaster to Philadelphia Turnpike coming through Lancaster Township. Was indeed a turnpike where tolls were taken to help offset the construction and maintenance. But its first official designation came in 1730. That was the year after the county was formed, the year after the township was formed. And the provincial governor of Pennsylvania ordered the development of a quote "high road" from the town of Lancaster to the division line between the counties of Chester and Lancaster. Now, it took them three years to actually lay out the road, to do the measurements, and this was done by a team of seven men who were selected to lay out the road, and they followed a wagon road trail that had, or a wagon road that had initially been just an Indian trail. So they found this pathway through the woods, followed it, improved it, and then it became the King's Highway three years later. It was part of a much larger network that was built, as it says here, from 1650 to 1735. Thirteen hundred miles of King's Highway was built from Boston all the way down to Charleston, South Carolina. And this was created under the orders of Charles II of England. And he set it up that way, or he ordered it because for many months out of the year, travel was exceedingly difficult. Now, you'll see here in this illustration, this is a typical wagon that was used to convey goods, and you can see that there's a teamster out in the front leading the team of mules or horses, the driver on top of the wagon. But along the very bed of the road, you can see logs that are laid parallel to each other and in a perpendicular fashion to the traveling, and this is called a coteroy road. So to get across marshy areas in order to create traction, they would place logs right next to each other so that the horse hooves could have something to pull across, and the wagon wheels could traverse the area. Now, the King's Highway, you can see in this blue line, it traveled from Compass, which is a town that still exists, a small village on the border of Chester County, traveled across the county through the center of the county, which includes Lancaster Township and Lancaster City, and then went, continued on out to Wright's Ferry and Columbia. The Philadelphia to Lancaster Turnpike, or what we call the Lincoln Highway today, that's a different alignment, a little bit farther to the south, and then that was improved to create, in 1794, the Philadelphia to Lancaster Turnpike. The King's Highway then turned into the Old Philadelphia Pike. That's the name we know it as today, 230. And as it made its way into Lancaster Township, it crossed the Conestoga River on one side, and it crossed the Little Conestoga Creek on the other side. Now, on that eastern side, you probably recall this bridge. This is Abram Whitmer's Bridge, Nine Arch Stone Bridge that was created in, finally opened in 1800, and that was right next to the Conestoga Inn. So you'll see here, this is the Conestoga Inn that still exists today, that was built at the same time as that bridge was built. And then there is another house here that still stands along East King Street. But just look at that, the farm field, all in that distance. This is where South Conestoga Drive comes up to Rank Mill Road and makes that bend up through. So it was all agrarian landscape, even when this picture was taken in the 1800s. Now, this 1824 map shows that alignment of what was the King's Highway coming into Bridgeport, and then you can see the Lincoln Highway or Route 30 alignment coming into Bridgeport. But I've often wondered if perhaps when the King's Highway was first developed, if they didn't use the Doctor's Ford, which became one of our township municipal boundary corners. We share that corner with Manheim Township. So there is no record of the road actually crossing at that location, but perhaps I'll stumble across it someday. But exiting on the western side, this was a picture of the bridge at the time crossing the Little Conestoga Creek in the 1890s. This farmhouse still exists on the East Hemfield side of that, of the creek at that crossing, and this is what the bridge looks like today. A little bit different. That house, again, still exists there on the East Hemfield side. You can also see, looking down the pike, where the trolley used to run, the old carriage house, and that's Columbia Pike heading off to the west, and the Maple Grove Mill Building there on the left-hand side. And that's sort of what we have today. Things have changed, but those alignments of the old King's, the King's Highway and all those turnpikes, they still guide us where we go today. So that's what I wanted to offer tonight. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you, Ben. Questions?
Question.
All right. With that being said, we're now adjourned.